The Village Council of Oxford, regular meeting Tuesday, May 10th. Call for 7:03. We could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam. Could you call the roll, please?
Laurie Bojo.
Here.
Kelsey Cook.
Here.
Lori Helmut.
Yes.
Allison Kelton.
Here.
Ashley Ross.
Here.
Thank you. Item number four is our approval. Do we want to approve the agenda?
Do you want to move anything forward so maybe Lori can leave the budget?
Yeah, we can do that. Where's the...
10B. Impossible.
Let's see.
If I have the public hearing board...
Well, you can move it to 5C. You have to do the Truth and Taxation Act on the budget. Would that be acceptable?
That works. Thank you. That work? Yeah.
Is that all right?
Yeah, you can just close out your public hearing.
Close the public hearing and go to your budget.
I make motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support. Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. The amended agenda. Okay. Number five on the agenda is public hearings. The first one is our Truth and Taxation hearing. I'll move to open the public hearing at 7:05.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are now open for a public hearing in Truth and Taxation and Budget. The... This is for purposes of levying our millage rate at 11.12 mills for July 1st, 2022 through August 31st, 2023.
30.
Yep.
True question.
Would anyone like to speak?
Did you have those months run for the month correct?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it should be June 31st.
June 30th.
I'm sorry, 30.
It's June 30, yeah.
So, 30 days to June.
Thank you.
Roll.
Would anyone like to address council regarding our Truth and Taxation budget hearing? Seeing none, I would move we close public hearing at 7:06.
Support.
Any discussion on motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Public hearings. Then we have the proposed resolution 22-08 for approval of the budget for fiscal year 2223. If there are no questions, we're to have our cards. Hope you could ask them within the motion and move to adopt resolution 22-08 to adopt the 2223 budget for the village of Oxford.
Support.
Motion made by Klemm, supported by Helmut. Any discussion? Questions?
So, the Klemmists live amongst all the folks, Joe?
Just a little bit because we're getting on the internet through that now.
Okay.
Yeah, just recent switch. They got out of the dark ages. It was about like dial-up if you were sold out, but now it's capacity factor.
Is the DDA plan making adjustments, big adjustments throughout the year?
I don't think so. I wasn't at the budget hearing. It was a special meeting last night. Now we have a project in the northeast parking lot.
That's not of this fiscal year though. That's not for next year.
Well, it did, okay. Glad we can get it started by then.
Anyone need more time for questions?
We're just going to get the DDA budget earlier next year, right?
Oh, so we provided the same time last year, but you guys had two meetings last year, so that's what happened. That's why we do charge forward.
We should have it at the end of March, early April.
Happy you provided. It was finished, so.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote on the motion.
Helmut?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Bojo?
Yes.
Motion carries. The budget, thank you. Next up, under item 5, public hearing, the delinquent utility billing and violations hearings to add those delinquent charges to the 2022 tax rule.
Make motion to approve the public hearing regarding utility billing and violations to add to the 2022 tax rule.
Support. Motion made by Helmut, supported by Bojo. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. Hearing is open. This is a hearing where council will can hear from the public regarding delinquent violation notices. We have 21 individual addresses where mostly all of water bills. Is that correct, Mr.?
Yes, a few may living mowing.
Mowing, okay.
Living, so.
Okay, thank you. And since they're on page, we can certify those notes to the tax rule. Would any public like to comment during the hearing period on this item? Seeing none. I'll move that we close public hearing at 7:09.
Support.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion carries. Hearing is closed. Thank you. Okay, next is item 6 on the agenda. It's a presentation regarding a Freedom of Information Act appeal and discussion. Mr. Davis?
Members of the council, we've tried to give you some of the material. The material that could be relevant is very voluminous. Michigan's FOIA at MCO 15.240 provides options to the public when a FOIA request is denied or denied in part. One option is to appeal the decision of the FOIA coordinator, in your case clerk, to the head of the public body. The village council is the head of the public body for the local government. You have an appeal submitted by Mr. Gertsberg to the appeal process involving the head of the public body. The reason I point that out is there's always an option. He could also go to the Supreme Court, but he's chosen to appeal to you. We then have 10 days from today's date, the date of the meeting, to respond to the appeal. Mr. Gertsberg has submitted, as is his right, about 94 FOIA requests maybe in the last six months. As the FOIA requests progressed, the common theme was to seek information concerning this village's MERS contributions and documents. When pushed, I am able to show you in my packet. I got him to admit or disclose what was the purpose of his actions. And he responded saying, "I want to expose a MERS scheme to embezzle non-paid and non-forfeited benefits and use them for the benefit of MERS in violation of law." So there is a common theme to his FOIA requests. At some point in the FOIA request process, the request began to condition what documents were being sought on interpretation of case law, case law from federal courts, case law from the Michigan Supreme Court, and essentially saying, "As this is presented in this Michigan Supreme Court case or this U.S. Supreme Court case," and then try and link it to a document. Although he gave you one of my responses to him on that issue, I would like to read to you what I tried to do with this gentleman. As these were becoming more and more embroiled in what I consider to be having to do case law interpretation in order to respond, I said to him in January of this year, "FOIA is not a statute that can be used by the public to seek opinions or conclusions from a public body. It's a statute that allows the public to have access to public records that are responsive to a defined FOIA request for those records. While your presentations are interesting, we will not be responding to your requests for legal conclusions or agreements with your legal positions on the law. What we will do consistently is review your presentation for outstanding valid requests for public records, and we will in fact provide any responsive public records as required by the law." And then he gave you another email from the... Where I just said, "Let me be clear again, we're not going to do this." So I wanted you to know the history of how we tried to work on this. We also at some point invited him to just come to the office, sit down with us, let's try to work through what you're really looking for here, and let's try and give it all to you at once instead of getting a FOIA request every other day. So before you tonight is a FOIA request that was made on March 19th, 2022. And it should be in a smaller packet, starting off with, I think you all have it.
It's one you have to trace that over here.
Michigan Supreme Court, and then he cites to a Michigan Supreme Court case, provides for the following. "It is clear therefore that contributions made by the municipality," and he quotes from the Supreme Court. And then he makes a request, "Would you please provide me with a document that contains an amount of agreed compensation that Oxford had, but not necessarily did, to contribute to MERS in July of 2021 to support the defined benefit plan of its employees in accordance with all of Michigan laws?" We provided a document, and that's the second page, responsive to that request. If you go to the next page, he restates on Wednesday, April 13th, basically the same request, but if you can see the bolded language, "non-defer," he puts in "non-defer." That's the only change in the request. Then there's some dialogue about whether or not we're all using the same legal dictionary, and he was trying to get us to produce a record, what legal dictionary we refer to when we're doing our analysis of these FOIA requests. So we didn't deny his request, we just issued a denial, saying we don't have any other public records responsive to your request. And that forms the basis of the appeal. I'll let the clerk speak. The clerk has been on the front line of dealing with these FOIA requests. I can tell you that when there was a public record clearly identified and we had it, we gave it. That's your obligation under FOIA. The members of the public can define a public record you're seeking. If you have that public record, you give them that record. You're not required to compile a new record. You're not required to create a new record. You are required to give public records that are available and defined in the request. What I really can't have is situations where, and I'll try to give a much easier example than this MERS example, where, for example, you get a FOIA request for any and all documents relating to a trip and fall that happened in your parking lot related to a nuisance.
You know, make sure that I wasn't remiss in what he was asking for. If there was a document that existed, I certainly wanted to provide it for him. And I also have been doing this for 22 years, and I don't even... People don't even have to FOIA me for information. If it exists and they say, "Hey, can I have this record or that record?", I gladly give it to them in an instant. This whole formality that I have to go through with the asking for an extension, requesting an extension, because I have so many FOIAs, it's really eating into all the work that I have to do on a daily basis. And when I do issue a notice of denial, it even says, "The item does not exist by... Under the name you provided in your request or by another name reasonably known to the village. A certificate of that public record doesn't exist under the name given. If you believe this record does exist, provide a description that will enable us to locate the record." And he has consistently not done this. So it's a kind of chasing my tail kind of experience with this one, but you know, I still have requests on my desk that are pending to answer, and I'm happy to provide him with the record if he can identify them, so.
But I just want to add one thing. In the packet that began with that first email, did you go... We labeled, we circled numbers 1, 2, 3, and 4 at the bottom. Did you go to page 4, please? And in the middle, the email that is to Terry, just read the first full sentence. "Thanks for providing me with the document," with the document that contains exactly what he asked for. He's appealing that we gave him, but this letter acknowledges that we actually gave him the document he was looking for. So we don't have any other document responsive to that question. Anyways, I thought you would find that instructive.
Yeah, in that packet that Fox referred to, it's chronologically gives you these emails, but another issue that we have is that he doesn't respond. A lot of times, the emails are not connected to the request, and he refuses to use the FOIA form that's provided, actually mandated by the state that we use, which would help me to identify, you know, and track all of his requests in the records. If you look at the sheet that I... The spreadsheet I provided, I have multiple requests for the same thing. And I have to actually go back when he sends me an email saying, "Hey, you haven't responded to this," and search the emails and, you know, provide a... Make sure that I have done my due diligence and responded. So, you know, that's the best I can do, and there's really nothing more to say. I would recommend that you just deny his request, although I really don't know what you're denying.
Well, I think at this point, we're either affirming or reversing your decision that he's appealing. Any questions?
I have one, I guess, probably not really relevant, but in the email on page 4 that you pointed out, it says, "Thanks for providing me with the document that contains an amount of agreed compensation Oxford took from MERS in July." So then, two paragraphs down, he said, "So now I try to understand what you mean by the word 'compensation.'" But when you respond to his request, did you use the word "compensation"? Or that's his word? And he's trying to figure out how we may interpret it.
Now he wants us to all get... Now he wants an agreement through FOIA that we all use the same dictionary. So when I say "compensation," Lori, you say "compensation," we mean the same thing. Again, leading to legal interpretations that I just don't think the clerk is going past engagement.
Excuse me, but if what you're asking is, when I respond, the language I use is their language. I just...
She paraphrased it.
...interpretations, you know, I might truncate some of the stuff that's irrelevant and get right down to what they're asking for when they say, "Please provide me with this record or copy this record." It's their wording that mine.
So if you go to physical page, circle number 5, what we've been doing is, we've been restating the request. So that we're... See what we're doing there? For the documents requested, and then we put in quotes, "What did you ask for?", and then we say, "Are not in our possession because there are no such public records." And then we issue it.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Anyways, the public body is inclined to uphold the FOIA coordinator's denial of a public record that did not exist as evidenced on physical page number 5. And as the subject of the appeal tonight, we would need an affirmative vote, and then I would prepare within three to five days the document for the village president to execute on behalf of the public body as a whole.
Support.
By Ross, supported by Helmut. When we provide... My only concern is, though, that when we provide, depending on how the letter is worded with our motion, then he's going to say, "Well, that's not what I asked for, so you didn't do anything about my appeal." So is there a way we can write it broad enough to where it covers... We're affirming all the decisions of the clerk up till this time, based on whatever your appeal may have been.
We are upholding the underlying decision that forms the basis of your appeal.
Right, perfect. Clear.
Perfect. It's the first time I've heard that today, in a communication directed to me.
Thank you. Okay. With that understanding, we'll do a roll call.
Roll call.
Okay. Bojo?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all for... Any questions to the council?
Yeah, thorough presentation, that was really helpful. Okay, next up is call to the public. So this is a time for council to hear from any members of the public who wish to speak during our public conference, about anything you'd like to speak about. You can volunteer to state your name and address if you'd like, and please feel free to take a step up to the podium if anyone's interested.
Good evening. Chief Mike Sol, Oxford Village Police Chief. I don't know if the council's aware or anything has been brought to your attention about the memorial parade. I guess I'm here on behalf of the Legion to let you know that they've asked for us to provide security for that and road closure for that event on May 30th at 10 o'clock, like we always do every year. So I know I talked to the fire chief today, and they hadn't advised him yet either, so I'm just not sure how you guys want to handle that, because I know that's the date of this month, and we're just getting word... I had actually called him and said, "Hey, you want to do a parade this year?" And then somebody finally got back and they said, "Yes, we want to do a parade." And they said, "The school's going to be there." They said, "The fire department's going to line up." But when I talked to him, then he's like, "Oh, we are? Okay." So I don't know if that has to be approved today, or if I'm just letting you know it's going to happen, or...
It's our only meeting this month.
Okay with it?
Yeah.
What I can do in the past is, they did a special vanification. The fees were paid by someone other than them to cover it, and they provided the insurance and those items. So as long as they follow the same pattern, I'm sure you guys could approve that and we can ensure that it hits all the marks for them.
They get a sign off from you and...
Yeah, the only reason I brought it up today is because I just found out, and I'm just informing him, and this is the last meeting before the memorial. Yes, Chief Schultz called this afternoon, so I heard, I guess, not a word. That's bad, that's... Sometimes they have a change over there, and then a person takes over to in charge of it. I think there's been a managerial change, so yeah, so there's a... But it's been easy breezy. Yeah, for the most part. They always do good giving their documents to us, their insurance to us. There are veterans, they deserve it. We'll make it happen. It's just I just wanted to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Thanks for bringing that up. Do we need a motion at today's meeting then to approve that in advance?
I would. I make motion to approve the eventual request for Memorial Day parade on May 30th at 10 a.m. from San Diego Park to the original cemeteries in the past. With Joe Mendorff being in charge of making sure it got all the decks around.
Second. Motion made by Helmut, second by Ross. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries.
Thank you, council. Sorry to the last minute.
Thanks for bringing that up.
That's my 30th wedding anniversary, but I'll still be there.
Grand marshal. That is dedication.
I know.
So is a good trip. I got a flight on the first day.
No one gets five either.
Your spot is available.
Anyone else?
Really?
Yeah.
My name's Jennifer Crater. I live at 14 Pontiac Street. I'm just coming with a really, I'm calling it loosey-goosey, request that I recently sent to council last month with regard to possibly doing a proclamation for Wear Orange Day, which is the first Saturday in June each year, and it just brings to light the National Gun Violence Awareness Day all across the country. There's 29 other municipalities in Oakland County that already do this each year, and I guess I want to say that you guys have already done so much, and I really think that if you did this next year, when you had a lot more time to like give it your full thought and attention, because I feel like the powers that be dropped it on me last minute, and so I feel like I dropped it on you last minute, so I'm putting it out here now for like next year, if we think about it. It's just something that a lot of municipalities do year after year. They put a proclamation in place, and then they just kind of re-up it every year, saying, "We're still in..." You know, "We support the survivors and the victims of gun violence." So like I said, it's the first Saturday each year in June. It's called Wear Orange Day, and I totally would appreciate it if you would give it your consideration for next year and then kind of going forward after that. So, thank you so much.
Great, thanks for your comments.
Did I send that one home?
We have an email.
Yeah, I copied everybody, but...
Okay.
And I can resubmit it, too.
I don't use the village's email.
Oh, okay.
I have too many emails.
Okay.
I'll get somebody else's.
No worries.
We'll get it to everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else like to speak under public comment?
Great.
Seeing none. Move on to our present agenda, item 8. Any other motion for 8A, 1 and 2?
Support.
Thank you. Second. Motion made by Helmut, second by Ross. Any discussion on the receiving file motion?
I was really happy to get all the reports. I'm blanking on them.
Enforcement?
Thank you. Enforcement, yes. Just getting that back in the packet, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and congratulations to our clerk on her completion of her certificate, so I know that was... Took a long time.
You're a good person.
Thank you for calling.
You got an A plus in the...
Took you forever, but you got there.
Highest grade in the FOIA section.
I did have a question about that. Does that complete everything in your contract?
Yes, that completes the certification that I was required.
Okay.
As a law.
I have some other... We have some other certificates.
I mean, it is an ongoing program for professional development and to maintain current, you know, your current certification. So there's ongoing, just like it's any profession, teaching or whatever, so.
Thanks.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. 8B approval items?
Make motion to approve agenda items 8B, 1, 2, and 3, including the bills in the amount of $127,064.73.
Support. Motion made by Helmut, supported by Bojo. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Bojo?
Yes.
Helmut?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Number nine, unfinished full business. Our residential inspection coordinance discussion with McKenna is here to help answer all of our questions.
And so, real quick, so when we added item 6 to the agenda, of course, that puts everything down, that's why everything in our agenda package is off by a number, here for 8. And so, Mr. John Jackson here, and Jim Mike Bowles, they can tip up. I did send them a little some questions, some basic questions that he has answered. I included in the packet the old, from the last November, the initial poll from them and how they would see it. Since then, I think we've kind of narrowed it down a little bit. The rental program inspection form I shared with you guys today was broken down to 10 areas. It's down to eight items now.
So in context, before they speak, we're working on the second leg, if you will. You have your registration and we're putting together a inspection component ordinance, and how that gets carried out is what we have been trying to hear for. So we want to make sure it ties with how we bring that particular section.
And before we pivot to them, one more thing. So the registration portion was adopted last month. If you compile the list, we've sent out 88 letters to rental units which covered 130 rental units, 217 of them are after its where apartment, complex of course, and 213 are others. That's how many rental units have been covered so far, which is what we just sent out with the inspection form that we invented and put together. And we already received one back and they were just mailed last week. Part of the form does indicate on the bottom, I signed it, that there's smoke detectors and carbon dioxide detectors in rooms. That's one of the things I know Chief was concerned about, so we put it right on the registration form as a way to kind of get ahead there. So we have a good database of those already in place that we've mailed mailings to.
So Chief, with their signature on the form, we're having them verify the items that you found to be important. But anyways, Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, well, so my name's John Jackson with McKenna. It's nice to be here, it's been a while since I was here, so it's nice to see everyone again. And of course Jim Wright, our building department guru is here also to get into the nuts and bolts, but we understand, as was mentioned, you've already started the first leg of the process, identifying the rental properties, getting them registered, and you know, we've been sort of going back and forth with Joe about, okay, what comes next after that? And he put together a series of questions about sort of logistics associated with the inspection process. So, and it seems like the village is interested in taking a different approach whereby the inspection process would basically be separate from the village, conducted and maintained by an independent party, which would be McKenna. I think that's a little different approach, but you know, we're open to challenges and we're willing to work with you and figure out how that will work. So a lot of these questions are sort of, how might that work if we set up a separate standalone process for inspecting the rental properties? So the first question is, who sets the inspections, right? So we're happy to have people calling to McKenna, we give them a phone number they can call, and they can ask to set up a rental inspection in accordance with whatever terms we put in the order, once every two years or you know, whatever the cadence is. So we're happy to do that. The one thing that I sort of flipped and asked the question back to the villages, would we have access to the village's BSNA system so that we could track the rental inspections in the BSNA program? We can get, you know, BSNA has the ability to provide remote access, so we could do that from the comfort of our office in Northville, just enter the information remotely. The other option would be we could set up our own system and maintain records, you know, at Northville, give you monthly reports, provide individual certifications, whatever you needed us to provide, we could do and maintain that ourselves. If we did that, I'll get to this point a little bit later, it would cost a little more to set up our own system to do that than it would to piggyback off your existing BSNA system. Next question is, when would the, Jim, by all means, you just shut me down.
The next question is all different.
So when would they be, when would the inspections be available? And again, we thought we, we tried to coordinate that with when we currently have building staff here in the village, so that's twice a week. So we would try to schedule the rental inspections, group them on the two days where we have staff already here at the village. So we're estimating those would be available two days a week. You know, again, I think the volumes would vary over the course of the two years, you'd probably have a rush at one part of the year and then things would slow down for the rest, but we're thinking we would provide those inspections twice a week. The next question is, okay, what happens if there's issues? When the inspector goes out there and looks at a property and says, "You don't have your smoke detector," or "You don't have your GFI," what happens then? Who handles the additional costs? So the way we typically do this is that the initial cost for inspection includes two inspections. The cost for certification includes two inspections. So that would include the upfront inspection, take a look at it, and then the follow-up one to see if there are any problems. By the, if by some chance, when they went there and I looked at the, did the rental inspection, something required a building permit, like if there was something that was wrong with the building and it required a building inspection, then that would be turned over to the village building department and processed the same way any permit would be handled. So the next question was, how much for a follow-up inspection? Again, you know, the initial registration fee would include two inspections, but if for some reason there was a lockout, or if when they went back for the second inspection, they still hadn't put in the GFI, or they put it in crooked, or they put it upside down, or whatever, then there's an $80 reinspection fee. So, and that would cover the costs of coming out again. The last question really was, what is the upfront cost for setting this up if we were to do it? And I estimated $1,000 if we could piggyback off your BSNA system, and that would basically be putting out forms together, modifying BSNA, so we have the proper system in place to record the information, that sort of thing. If we had to set up our own system without BSNA, I estimate about $3,000 to do the same thing, setting up forms, creating our database, and setting that up for smooth reporting and that kind of thing. The last thing we put on there was in terms of enforcement, we suggested that if you do decide to go forward with this, that you would authorize our rental inspector as a code enforcement officer, so that if they were on the site, they could also issue citations for code enforcement, and also if there, if people weren't complying with the rental inspections, we could issue citations for that as well. So that's it, try to keep it short and sweet and hit all, check all the boxes. So I know this is a big decision for the village, you know, it's a big change, but if you have any questions, we're happy to help you out, you know, we're happy to help out, you know, implementing whatever you need from us, we're happy to help, whichever direction you go.
Thank you. My question started with cost and invoicing, so would you expect the village to pay McKenna or whether the individual property or should be paying McKenna?
Well, again, this is sort of an unusual situation. In all of the other communities that we work in, they pay the community and then, you know, then the community pays us. But if there's a way to do it where they pay us indirectly, if we issue, you know, an invoice in the property, we could do that too.
Yeah, I'm just trying to envision how it could work if they're contacting you to schedule it, then I feel like they would need to get the village, because it seems like the village is wanting to have a contract with McKenna, the invoices would be paid, but then I don't want there to be a collections issue, you know, for McKenna or for the village, really, because...
Right.
I guess you need to get paid first because you do the inspection, right? So I guess that would solve it, but...
Yeah, when they submit their, you know, their application for certification, we'd have to have that, you know, fee that covers the two inspections. If we had to do a reinspection, that might lead to some collection issues.
If I may.
Yeah.
So when John says it's a little bit different than they've done in the past, that's kind of the way I think I described it to you guys and I mentioned it in tooth. For us, I mean, there's four of us in here, the building official's here twice a week, but he's two hours on Tuesday morning, two hours on Thursday morning, so I'm not sure how much he's going to be able to be done in those because he's already doing his other work. But what I described, David, a little bit best for us is almost like a no-touch trade, and like outsourcing, kind of like what Resources Christian does, they send out letters to people to get your inspector inspection done, here's a list of contractors, when it's done, provide it to us. So that's kind of the model I was going for, to make it less burdensome on us, and I don't want to try to get in the middle of us trying to schedule them, when their inspection's going to be, so if we can get out of the middle, I have no problem with being able to contract with them and directly pay them, and then end result for us is have the inspections been done and really completed, I mean, and we could really have all the data base. So I think that would, it kind of cuts us out of the middle in a way, puts a little different aspect for them, but it might be a way to work, make it more streamlined, maybe.
Would we be requiring McKenna to be the inspector, right? Because we also talked about maybe having, I mean, allowing people to obtain their own inspector and just submit it, but then, you know, it's not...
Kind of like the idea of consistency and professional consistency.
And we talked about that briefly in breaking that out of town, too, but we're okay single sourcing them, because again, we don't want just anybody that has a, either do a three-hour class for home inspections to be qualified person that we're looking for, we want qualified individuals that was they would find. So their staff would be the ones doing it. Again, kind of like, in a way, similar to the model of our resources for the backbones, but we already have a single source provider.
Right, they use all the time. I mean, how do you feel about that, towards like workforce availability, to be here more, and also, you know, taking payments directly from all these customers? I know consulting firms like yours probably don't feel that publicly, I would assume?
We, we don't.
Okay.
And that's not very usual, but again, you know, because, let's face it, you guys are going to get complaints, right? I mean, the rental inspectors aren't the most popular people in any community I've ever seen in my life, so you know, you're going to get complaints, they're going to say it's a money grab, you're going to say all these different things. But we've been through it and it happens even when we're working for a municipality, they get the same criticism, so I'm not too worried about, and I'm not worried about that.
And if payment somehow could be done through us, because we have the system to catch receipt and write to BSNA, maybe we can work that out where, yes, they schedule a break to you, we accept payment and then issue you a work order type thing.
Sure. Or if they had access to BSNA...
Well, they do, they want to have access to and be able to catch receipt and accept payment through our catch receipt. I think they're just looking at the database to apply data and result into it, which we can do.
That is, Jim Wright, that is how I envision it kind of taking place. If we were able to invoice Oxford for it, Oxford collects the fees initially upfront, we'd be able to do that. Also, as John mentioned, if we had the ability to be the enforcement agency for it, we'd handle all logistics for people that weren't complying, weren't paying the fees, weren't submitting their applications, let it all happen through us as being appointed court enforcement officers for that specific point.
Real quick, so, and then we talked about this in the past, with Dan Durham leaving us last November, our new gentleman's on, of course Mike's stolen for the first eight, 10 weeks for his department officer, we finally got him on. There's a high probability now that we're looking to add an officer into the ranks full-time, that that will be the person, so he will be looking for a court officer. Perhaps there's a marriage here that can be done where they do our court officer or incorporate into that. I don't know what that cost is, we have, this is kind of a moving target where we got this guy that's kind of getting up to speed, our court officer, but now we're, high probability that he will be accepted or applied for a full-time position, so he may have invited, so he wouldn't all want to be involved with us, and he'd already know how difficult it's to find someone to do that. Perhaps this is a court officer who also does rental inspections, opportunity. If you could do court officer work in other communities, right?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Because we're, Dan was great because he was retired fireman for years, he has a little niche, that's what he liked to do, and he worked great for years, but now that he's gone, it's hard to replace.
We helped the court enforcement here before, and since, you know, making the building issues, we helped those issues.
Because I worry about trying to have our building officials here two hours Thursday morning, two hours Tuesday morning, also building, incorporate any rental inspections in that small window.
Well, if we did decide to use that person, they would have to be here longer.
Right.
The two hours would have to be unimpacted by it, so this would be envisioned, but we do have other inspectors in communities that are not far away, you know, code enforcement people that could easily do that.
So John, as we're writing this, two questions. What amount of money would we have to collect to defray the system we're describing? In other words, let's say we have a trigger point that we're going to have a rental inspection every two years, or at such time, I don't know, there's a reren, whatever those triggers are, we'll, we have some draft language. What's the defray cost? I mean, the village has to be made whole, right? But we're not. So what would we have to collect in order to defray the cost?
What would you say to arrange this, Jim?
Rental inspections typically, if you're doing it every two to three years, rental inspections normally are between $175 and $250, and that's on a two to three year basis. So if we break that down, when you have a landlord that's collecting rent monthly, the whole period is 24 to 36 months, if you look at $175 to $250, it's... Okay, I just need to get a feel for that, because I'm drafting.
Is there any sort of discount if they're, let's say you're going to, that the building may have rate, so boom, 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 with that?
We could look into, we do have programs, we have multi-unit apartment complexes where we do inspections on what they call the common areas for each building, and there's a price set for that, and then there's a price set for each unit, individual. So let's say I've had instances where they have $100 per building plus $25 to $75 per unit, and we've even made arrangements where we pick and choose which units we want to go into, so we don't have to go into every single unit. Because typically you can get into a building and see the condition of a unit of a building pretty good by going through a few units instead of all of them. Of course, there could be cases where you're getting complaints, where a tenant may be complaining about a particular unit, so we'd make sure that during our inspection, at that time, we go and look at that specific unit. But there are ways to be able to work within a fee schedule so that the cost isn't as high when it comes to multi-unit things. Single-family homes typically has a set price, $175 to $250, but when you get to multi-units apartments, it's usually, like I said, a flat per building, then per unit.
That's a good question, because I was envisioning with this ordinance being the single-family homes, the duplexes, the quadplexes, I wasn't envisioning like an apartment complex necessarily.
We have a couple, yeah, that would be...
Could those be exempt somehow because they're like...
Well, the cookie cutter, in the way you're saying, the inspection comes out pretty cheap.
Okay.
I know the fire department already expects common areas already for certain things. I don't know if that would satisfy that need, but perhaps so.
So, you know, again, we understand you're just starting this program out, and there's a list in your draft ordinance with eight items that you want us to focus on, and I think once, you know, you set a baseline, get a feel for, you know, how the properties are being maintained, you know, you'll have a better idea moving forward. You know, so in the multiple unit complexes, like Jim said, you want to need to make sure they're standing up on things, that kind of stuff.
Time period, do you think, between inspections, two years, three years, one year? Typically, it's, myself personally, I like seeing three years on them.
Okay.
Two years seems, one year's kind of...
All right.
Doesn't overkill. Two years, I think, when you're doing this rental inspection, typically you give them six months to make the repairs on something, because you're trying to work with the homeowner on it, unless it's a real serious life safety issue, if you're walking and you find, you know, leash wires hanging on a light, well, you got to get that fixed now, but typically on that list, if they can get it taken care of within six months, we go back, so that's a half a year anyway, so three-year timings is usually pretty good on that.
Thank you.
So if we limit, I understand and I agree that we don't want to have an extensive list, and we don't want to nitpick on, silly, that fall down a rabbit hole, but say it's not on the list and it's, there's a, you walk in and there's a gaping hole in the floor, or the fuse box, was recalled 30 years ago, give to a fire hazard, how would we handle something like that, that is like egregious?
Well, we're talking about life safety issues when you're talking about structural things, and of course that's going to be included, that'd be included in the list. But if we walk in and see something else that isn't on the list, that isn't, let's say, isn't a life safety issue, the village already has adopted the property maintenance code, and all those items are addressed under the property maintenance code, so we can defer to the code enforcement officer, that's... defer to the code enforcement officer, that's where the rental inspector would have, be working closely with the code enforcement officer, so that the code enforcement officer can co-trust it through the, the property maintenance code. That is the advantage, you have another set of eyes inside a building with the rental inspection, because you can pick up on these other, I mean, serious but not so serious items and be able to discuss with the code enforcement officer.
You know, like you said, you walk across the floor, and it starts going weak because there's problems in the basement.
Correct.
All right, that's something you would look at and address then.
Exactly.
If not part of rental inspection, defer to code officer and then address that.
It'd be taken care of, that's it.
At what point is it in this process, is it appropriate to discuss these items on the rental inspection information form?
Let's do it.
Because I personally would like to just go one by one, because.
On the checklist, right?
Yeah.
Or the listing?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, so I don't know if there has to be something on it that addresses the life safety issues, maybe just at the top, like, if there's a hole in the floor, we're going to tell you about it. I feel like that should be in there.
Would that be covered by referring to like the property maintenance code that you referred to, like, I'm sorry, if there's any.
Go back to the other.
Violations of that, they're also included.
But some of those property maintenance code also has flaking paint.
Which is an issue in older homes.
Yes, especially for less.
Yeah, for less.
But that wouldn't be the goal of the rental inspection process, but it would be the eyes that would tell our, our other official about those issues.
So, I guess I have problems with six and seven.
Six and seven.
And six, I completely understand why. And so, and that's for the smoke detectors installed on every level, in every room, in every hall, every bedroom, in the hall. That's just all a lot for the older homes. I know they had, and I know Chief, you can talk to it more, I know that's what you would like to see, like, is there a baseline, like, if we don't have it in every room, or like, no, this is it, we just have to have it in every room?
Do I get free smoke detectors?
Chief, it looks like you're in pain.
Chief, Joel, sorry.
It looks like you're in pain, chief.
As a gentleman, referring to, as they're going by the property maintenance code, the building code, they go in there and the current code calls for, you know, and everything. Our program that we have through Oxford Fire Department right now, in conjunction with a lot of the business owners and the, uh, the grant that we just got, I mean, we're doing door hangers and everything, going around to the Kintyre Community, to the, you know, old home parks, to the, you know, older homes sections that we're targeting and everything. In fact, as we were over on Glasskey Street today, across the street from DPW, and went in there and replaced all six detectors in their house for that, and it's all, we're doing it for free, we're doing it, but it's, you know, it's not that big of a deal. So, and this should be done.
Yeah, but they're not going to come in and hardwire it and hook them all up?
No, we don't, we don't.
And that doesn't have to be hardwired.
If they don't hardwire, if they're not hardwareed already, then we're doing the ones, but they all, by code, anyhow, it requires that they have to have a 10-year lithium battery in it anyhow.
Okay.
Smoke detectors there, it's telling you right now, they're only good for 10 years anyhow, so.
Okay.
Even the hardwired ones only good for 10 years.
Of course we do.
When we're talking about, when we're talking about six, does it include carbon, uh?
Carbon dioxide.
Yeah, I say it wrongly.
Yes, it should be, if that floor were fallen, or we had it over there also, carbon dioxide, it's not on here, but it's your instinct.
All right, and then number seven, so handrails must be in place to secure all stairs. I know like FHA, USDA loans are no longer, no, no requirement, they're processed, so like if you have, you know, two steps of.
Code says four more risers, you have to have a handrail. If you got a drop of 30 inches or more, you have to have a guardrail. So that doesn't mean every deck has to have a guardrail, it's just when you have a height of 30 inches or more, you have to have a guardrail, if you have four more risers, you have to have a handrail.
Okay, thank you.
The, you know, the other thing I just wanted to point out quickly, I'm glad that Chief brought up the fact that there's a program for the free smoke detectors, but, you know, when rental inspectors go into these houses, they can also be an ambassador for the village's programs, whether it's CDPG programs, you know, and you can put the home, the, the tenants or the, or the landlords in touch with these programs that the village has. So, you know, we're not trying to make things difficult for people, we're trying to keep them safe, uh, and, and so, you know, there's more ways to do that than just finding them and keeping them, you know.
You know, in my experience in doing these rental inspections in many different communities, very seldom do I find a violation where they don't have the smoke detectors in place because they are income homes and they are rentals. What I find is that the tenant is taking the batteries out, because they don't want to, they can't stand the groupiness. It's, it's usually the regular homeowner that has the problem with getting the smoke detectors in the home. Usually when it's a, a rental home, an income home, there's an incentive there to have the smoke detectors in place. And like we said, almost every fire department in the state of Michigan, if you go to them, they provide those, they're sure they all have that, that program, so.
Thank you.
For the 60 amp minimum service, um, I mean, is that, what would a property have to do to complete that if they didn't have it? Would it be running new wires, or would it just be a new breaker box?
Well, you know, the 60 amp minimum service, I see that a lot on different rental programs. 60 amp is the minimum service we see in houses built after 1960. That is the minimum service they put in. Very rarely we run across something less than 60 amp service. Modular homes, maybe, but the thing being is that our goal in doing his rental inspections is to make sure that what's in place is safe. So if they have a, a 60 amp service, because obviously they're drawing 150 amps of use alone, we want to make sure that they're operating the panel, and that's something we would call out on the inspection. Because a lot of times you see people, the homeowner is doing their own remodeling, they'll add lights, they'll add air conditioning systems, they'll add all these loads onto a system that isn't designed to carry that load, and that's where the fires come from, because they'll piggyback five or six circuits on 15 amp breaker and that problem.
Okay, and for houses, for our old homes that were built prior to that, I can imagine there's probably some out there that don't have circuit breakers, and so, would that conclude running all the wiring, or is it just literally taking the little knob ones off and putting a circuit breaker on?
The building code specifically says that you don't have to bring a home up to the current code, it's approved as it was as when it was built. However, if they modify it or don't maintain it, that's when they have to bring it up to the code. So if you have an over home here that has knob and tube wiring in it and it's been maintained, we don't have to make them change if they're not. Unless, unless they do an addition on the home, or we can see they've done renovations, then we can ask them to bring it up to the current code at that time. You know, but legally, according to building code, a house is issued a certificate of occupancy and is lost and maintained at the time that it, as it was when it was originally approved, there's no requirement for them to bring up the code, otherwise every year, or every three years when the code changes, they'll be going everyone's outdoor, knocking on them, saying, you know, we got to put, come up pretty soon, that's a fire suppression in residential homes, so they're going, you know.
Okay, and one more random inspection question. Um, we, we had one of our local landlords saying that the basement in one of his rentals was just like a lake at all times. I mean, would that be something, water in the basement, that's just standing or frequently?
That, that falls back under, because it's not on the list, doesn't necessarily mean we're not going to call it out. If it's a safety hazard or a mold hazard, that's where our communication with the code enforcement officer comes. I want to mention that by having these specific items written into the ordinance, that's a benefit in the fact that there's not really an appeal process on that. With the property maintenance code, we derive violation up to that, that person has a right to appeal that, and then they have a right to go before the property maintenance board of appeals. And so it's a long drawn out process and an expensive process too. Whereas when you have these specific items written right into the ordinance, it's like any ordinary tree, we'll enforce it in the, in the court, right, because it's, and they don't have a right to appeal.
Thank you. Any other question?
I just think that gives us a little bit more better understanding, again, how it works on the ground in the real world.
Yeah.
Like a tenant, like you're missing, and I'm talking to Jack, talking about, those six items are A M. to not on this, if after a year, if we find out, you know what, there's something that really should have been on this, we amend ordinance, and that had, I mean, to its then, so going forward, it would be something to enforce.
So our next step would be to draft the rental inspection ordinance provisions based on some of the valuable knowledge we received here. By the way, the, the reason we were going with a listing as opposed to adopting a code by reference is exactly what you just started to go in. And I think we can, we can get you a draft, I wouldn't call it a first reading for next month, just a, a discussion draft, I'll title it discussion draft, I'll send a copy to the two gentlemen, um, and we can have a discussion on it at the next meeting.
How, what would it take to get through everyone, do you think? Sorry, you can agree.
The initial, the initial starting up of a rental program is, is the board is, it takes some time. And that's like John mentioned, that initially it's going to, it's going to take some time. After you get it done, because the way the certificate is approved is, if renewed, it's based on the date of issuance. So you're going to have people that have violations have to fix it, and others that are okay or have the best, so three years down the road, it's going to be staggered because of the time that they had to fix it. But initially, it's going to be the board is, uh, to get them all taken care of, and I know, we're not going to, we'll send out initial notices, we'll probably, I've done before, where we've looked at, broke up the municipality inquiries, but we're going to focus on this particular quality first, and we'll move on to the next, and the next, so that it's done in an organized manner, and also gives the people more of an opportunity to acknowledge.
The, uh, the time isn't a, a capacity issue, you know, it's just how they come in, in terms of their certification, so it's going to take some time.
Thank you. Very much, very helpful.
Thanks, thanks, Dan, for coming up.
Thanks, Jamie.
All right. All right. Did you ever get that panel fixed?
No, it was, uh, hell.
Oh, it's me, it's not with mine.
Don't look to my house, he's.
No, no, he fixed it, he fixed it.
Really, you're right, much as possible.
Over I was not up.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Bye-bye.
My knob and tube is well-maintained, thank you.
Okay, I have the number 10, move it, we have proposed resolution 2207, fire insurance withholding, so, how I understood this is if a property has an insurance settlement, the municipality can take a percentage of that to ensure this building is taken care of.
Correct. And in this kind of light, I've, I've dealt with it for years, where I've been, and I went and there was a fire in a home, due to electrical wiring in the wall on Pearl Street some months ago, and he was explaining to me what the cause of that was, DT, it aren't even out there, they replaced all the service all the way down to, and even DT said, it's not us, it's in the house. And what, I don't know how many weeks or days after that, the house got fired. And so, and I asked him about that, we, we have it in place, and I thought, and he said, no, the village does it, the township does. And so that's when I started, oh, let's look at this, because someone can do a big settlement, unless you don't want it, I'm just going to move it north by the house, and then they just left over and, no. Yes, Chief. Sorry.
I helped to explain a little bit too, how the, how the whole thing works, by registering with the state's around a database as a state, so when a insurer has a loss, and the insurance company gets ready to start writing checks or doing whatever to fix the loss, by Oxford Village having their name on the list, the first thing they're going to do is automatically take, it's like, is it 5%, but it's up to like $700, $800 total, and then they send a check to the municipality, you guys put it in escrow or hold it in a TNA account or whatever it is like that. Sometimes the insurance companies request a letter from the fire chief stating that, yes, we had a fire at such and such, the time deliverable conditions, some don't even do it, they just automatically send, so I've got like 50/50 of ones that I've dealt with before, where A, the check automatically comes to the village and/or B, I would have to write a letter, you know, that they forward on to it. So the check comes, you hold it, they do their repairs and everything, and generally, before they get quote certificate of occupancy at the end of it, which means they've passed all their inspections and everything, at that time, then you release the check back to the homeowner, who's, because it's their money, and it goes back to them. But what it does, like you started about to say, is that, again, house burns down or gets, you know, half demolished or whatever, and sometimes we get a payment, and sometimes people take off, take the money and run kind of thing. This way it gets you at least $700, $800 that you could hire a bulldozer, we can wait and get it cleaned up if you had to. So it works pretty smoothly.
And it's one of those things that we might go years and never have to worry about it, and that's the hope.
Chief, are you prepared to hold this money in escrow? We're going to have a new fund.
Sure.
It could be an interest-bearing account, and we get to keep the interest-bearing account. Point 10, 20% we're getting right now.
She's still a liar. I water for everybody who wants the meetings.
If there's any questions, I'll make the most, give approval of resolution 2207 as presented.
Motion made by, how much, second by Ross. Thank you, Chief, for bringing us to our attention. Um, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Kemp.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Hobbit.
Yes.
And Ojo, Zepson.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, um, so we'll move to 10, on the aggregate speed, it's the second item under 10, proposed resolution 2209, with the blanket utility billing violations to be added to 2022 tax rule.
And that is what clarified something before, snow and mowing one hadn't been cleared up right before this, so, that's why you're showing a zero in there. That simply what does, you get the tax rule, but this one didn't be cleared up, required?
Yes, that's because we issue, send letters to all the landlords, and they generally, they won't come in and pay, so it's a good thing.
Yeah. Okay, um, I move to approve resolution 2209 as presented.
Word.
By Coach, brought by Hamid, any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Hamid?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ojo, Zepson?
Kemp?
Yeah.
Cook?
Yes, motion carries. Next, the Chamber of Commerce request for Christmas lights on the Palladium Trail Bridge.
Okay, and just as it says, that's strictly what this is, um, the last couple of years now, they've done it, uh, it's got great reviews, everyone's loved it, um, they have to go out and request it, Commission, Palladium Trail, Management Council, but they want to start with us first, and it's nice looking, people love it, they even had contemplated doing a year-round lighting, and MDA's open to that, but they would have to come up with a different plan, and different commercial lighting and maintenance plan, so to speak, but MDA's open to that. But they just wanted to say, hey, can we start this process now? Perhaps we'll begin this Christmas season.
Great, thank you. I move to approve the Chamber of Commerce request to put Christmas lights on the Palladium Trail Bridge.
Support.
Motion made by Coach, quartered by Kemp, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any may, motion carries. And he, the Star of Hope grant award, number 16.
Yes, so, sorry for the last minute addition here, I have this letter in my packet, and so when I was reading through Saturday, I finally saw that we were in fact awarded a partial, um, amount from our grant request. So if you, um, recall, we applied for Stars of, we applied for a grant from the Ford County Community Foundation for the Stars of Hope, um, temporary type exhibit in the empty parking lot that the DVA has been using for the farmers market. The initial request was for $7,500, and forgive me, I just got back in town an hour before this meeting, so I don't have all of the numbers, um, but the structure was somewhere around $3,600, and then we also had included a digitization aspect of it, and so the award that Ford County Community Foundation has granted us is $1,000, which is obviously nowhere near the $7,500 that we would need to do this project. So I briefly chatted with Kelly this morning about it, um, and there is a potential that we, we could just do the structure, and she thinks that with the $1,000 that we could make that, you know, with the construction cost, make that happen, um, and then possibly signage, you know, with DVA's name, that the DVA might be able to at least cover the signed part, since our name would be on it, and. And I'm sure that the Ford County Community Foundation has some sort of grant requirement that their logo has to be on it. So there is the potential just to do the structure for this one thousand dollars, but the rest would be off the table, we just don't have the funds for it. And we don't have that, as I said, don't we not have anything right in writing saying that, yes, we can do this construction for a thousand dollars, it would take a conversation and get that set. So we do need, sorry, I apologize, before I move to that part. Michigan Association of Art Therapists has been running the Stars of Hope program, they did ask for an update yesterday, they sent an email just saying, where does everything stand, and I wanted to talk to all of you before giving them an update, since this has all just kind of happened in the last couple of days. But I have a letter, we would have to sign it if we do accept the thousand dollars. And I don't know if we have to figure it out by a certain date to accept the funds, I'm uncertain we have to do this by somebody, I'm sorry, but I'm not 100%.
If I recall, well, the structure was like a chain link fence, wasn't it? With B or something?
Yeah, wooden with the chain link fence, like in between, so the initial construction figures were somewhere around three to four thousand dollars that we were quoted for it. We think we could probably use the thousand dollars to buy the materials, and then hopefully get like the labor donated, is what.
So we have someone, if I can just pitch them out quick, so one of the business owners in the community, her husband's in construction, and so she brought it up to him, and he's willing to donate the labor, he just needs a more thorough plan of what we're looking for, so we have a meeting set up tomorrow with him to see, because I think the thousand dollars would probably cover what I saw in the initial proposal from, that we got. And then the Stars of Hope, you know, the kids have already been paying them, so they're already done. So they're just sitting there.
We don't have any dollars for like any reception or anything like that, but we'll have a place, and then that they could go to and at least do those types of things if they wanted to. So what I think I would need is kind of a tentative motion that if we can get in writing, you know, the labor, sorry, the labor donated and the materials cost a thousand dollars or less, that we could then sign this, and it would need Kelsey's signature, and me and Kelsey to sign this. But I don't think we can say like, yes, we're going to sign it tonight, I think we need to have that meeting and say, we can actually do this first.
For the service that was going to be provided, for, you know, kind of changing out the stars and like facilitating the creation of them and stuff, is that all that's, is all being done? Is that taken care of?
That's all taken care of through the Stars of Hope organization, they're national, and in conjunction with the Michigan Association of Art Therapists. So that stuff is, it's already happening, they just wanted a place where these stars can go, and kind of recognize where it's going to be. And it can also, can we talk about pavement in that space? Okay. So the space is really going to be engaged over the next month. It will be paved over, so if we could get the construction to happen before the paving happens, the posts can be put into the ground, the whole entire site's going to be repaved, there's going to be a mural on Sisters. So on that side, there's going to be lighting going across it, and then on the other side, we would theoretically have this Stars of Hope displaced, there's a band that's going to be playing music weekly there, the social district has been expanded into that area, so like there's a lot happening in that space. So if we can make it happen for the one thousand dollars that we have been granted, it's just going to add to that, you know, whole placemaking in there.
So I would recommend you meet with the constructor, because you have to, you have to, when you sign this, sort of state your expected program date, and then within 30 days of completion of that program, you have to submit a report that they give you with the check. So when you get the thousand dollars, they give you a little thing, you're going to fill it off. So you may want to work on the timing, and then fill this out. Other than that, there's no other timing requirements. I saw you.
Oh, my God.
So I thought I would read it for you.
It's been a long few days.
I got it, I got it, I got it. So it doesn't look like any other deadlines, except for you have to state your completion date, so maybe you want to get that completion date.
Which would make this grant super easy if we do accept it.
Yeah.
Once the construction's done.
And then you don't use all the money, whatever you don't use, you have to give back. That's the only requirement, so use it all.
Which hopefully we want to use it all, because I worked in grant making, and I never want money back, so.
So you can get it executed, but I think you can't submit it until you know that. See that blank?
Yeah.
It's on the.
Your expected.
Right.
So just to be clear, the grant that we applied for was going to cover the construction, the labor, and then ceremony, and then incidentals or whatever?
And digitization, permanent record, like archival.
So if we just use it for the supplies, is what you're thinking, the materials, and the labor donated, we could still do it without those other things? Everything else would go as planned, it's just not saving it?
Correct. This is kind of, we can do it like this is the bare minimum, we can do the rest, we're nice to have.
Gotcha.
Cool.
Can I make a motion to, subject to the labor being donated, so that way we don't have to take it up at a future meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll move to accept the grant award in an amount of a thousand dollars subject to donation of the labor, to be able to use the grant money.
To be submitted when we know the expected completion date.
Thank you.
I'll support with my submission.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Cook?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
And Borjo, Zepson.
Thank you, Ashley. Thanks for working on this.
No, I'm sorry, I was just reading, they have a big check that could be used for press photos too, so.
All right, 11 items removed from the agenda, there's none, this is our second round of public comment, any public wish to speak?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports, how about, well, Noda, so Lori, Zepson.
Let me speak to another group.
Yeah, absolutely.
So a week or two ago, I spoke to them, they're looking to expand their rear parking lot, the asphalt, and initially, they kind of, the fire department about installing a fuel tanks back there that they could use for refueling, and they're going to maybe just put it out back, a little rail drive, so they can't do that. So today, they came in, generated, prepared sketch plan, they're getting the application, they're going to come, planning commission, see a site plan, so they're going to expand their parking lot to pave in the back. So they can have fueling on-site for their own cables.
Planning commission and cable commission, vote.
The planning commission, Matt, boy, it seems like only yesterday, we approved two site plans for dispensaries, one on Lakeville Road with a glass beam. Then a sign for.
Remixed.
I'm sorry?
Remixed.
Right. We had approved the sign a month ago for a cafe we were there, but it's a real estate thing, so we re-approved the sign at 453 South Washington. I load the cable.
DDA, any question?
I'm actually, you're okay, I was going to let Kelly do it, because I was not here.
Yeah, sure. Do you want to come up?
All right, so we had a busy month, great month. Our concerts in the park is kicking off on 6/16, everything is completely done for that. If you guys see, the Wayfinders already have the flyers up. Farmers Market, we have 15 vendors as of now, so we're looking for an additional 10, and that'll kick off in July in the new formed lot over there. So that lot really, we've been working for the past couple of months, we got approval from the landowner to utilize it, great to work with. And we reached out to some of the businesses that we have, you know, grown a relationship with in the last year, so, for example, the pavement was donated, and the paving was donated, and the lights, labor. And just really seeing businesses really come together, and wanting to do something really nice for the community, and it's just really cool to see that everybody's willing to pitch in. So I think that'll be an amazing space. Last night, the DDA approved to have, I don't want to call it a car show, but it's going to be, I think Scott from Six Pizza who's heading it up, called it Cars Extravaganza, which is a little much for me. But every Wednesday night, what we're going to do is activate that space with different car clubs that come in, so like when, you'll see a Lamborghini club come in, and we'll be able to park them in those spots. A live band from Lake Orion, 80s rock band, is going to come in and play every Wednesday night, free of charge for us. The trolley will be running down to Lake Orion for their concerts in the park on Wednesdays. So really trying to activate more weeknights, which is when our businesses really need the volume. So they, the DDA approved that last night, and they also approved a back-of-store facade program, which I think will be really, really great for our businesses. So, you know, we focused a lot on the front of our buildings this past year and a half. So now this gives the opportunity to building owners that have even applied for a facade program in the last year to come back to us, and now clean up the back area of their stores, whether it be an awning, a sign, paint. So I think that that's really necessary, and I think it's going to be a really great thing for town. We just had our pruning party, where we went out and we pruned all of the pods in downtown. Our spring cleanup is coming up May 22nd. We have about 15 volunteers signed up now, but definitely looking for more. The big project there, we would like to paint the gazebo, so I think that that'll be really pretty and fresh for this year. Sidewalk sales are going to coincide with the Flower and Art Fair in Lake Orion, so it's going to be the 20th and 21st. The trolley will be running, we already have flyers out, the stores are already looking to see what they're going to do for that. Ladies Night will be June 17th, which is kind of the big kickoff to our Car Extravaganza, the first concerts in the park, and then Ladies Night the next night on that Friday. So it's going to be a luau theme, and Lake Orion has jumped on board with us, so we met again today, so it's going to be both of us partnering together on that event. The Lake Orion Partnership, we have launched now a summer entertainment series that we're going to be working on tomorrow on Economic Vitality, by the way, Ashley. And that is really going to focus on a weekly, kind of a notification that goes out to Oxford and Lake Orion to showcase everything entertainment-wise that we have going on that week. So supporting our theater that we have downtown, 20 Front Street in Lake Orion, some of the, a lot of the local bands that are playing at the breweries, we're trying to focus on something besides for just restaurants and stores, retail. Let's see, they did approve a new logo last month, so we have changed the docs for DDA Bridging Home and History, trying to really bring our history back into it, remind people that, you know, not only are we awesome, but we have a lot of history in our historic district here. Let's see, anything else? The mural was approved last month that will start June 2nd on Sisters Building, and it's a mural that pays tribute to not only the downtown, but then also has the stars that represent the kids from the high school, and the hearts in it, but it's very much focused on the downtown area, but that is present as well.
Does it have to be approved by the planning commission?
No, no permit required. Memorial looks over as long as it's.
We made sure, we checked our boxes.
It used to be.
It can, as long as it doesn't pick any message, it cannot pick any message.
And then the last, oh, sorry, Joe. And then the last thing is, they also approved sidewalk repairs in what we're going to call quadrant one and two, which is behind the tap, and then the red nap quadrant, to level out all of the sidewalks there, and for that to go straight past there.
I do have one other update, a big one, so I don't remember the day, but the DDA has won two awards, Lake Orion and Oxford jointly have won the campaign for Main Street, I think that's for stronger together campaign, and then Rod Charles also won an award for Main Street Innovator. So there's 27 communities, nine awards possible, we were nominated for three, and we won two, so.
Thank you. That is incredible, Kelly, I just, I'm like blown away every time I hear about everything that DDA is doing, and I wonder what the DDA ever did before. I'm sure there was a lot going on, but.
It's really.
I'm 24 constructions.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Palion Trail.
Palion Trail, really been focused on cleanup, you know, kind of moving into spring and usage. There is going to be this Saturday, a, I forgot where to plug it, garlic mustard pole on the trail. It starts in Lake Orion, the event is online, so it is focused on getting rid of some of the invasive species that's easy to remove this time of year, so if.
How is the event online?
Oh, the event information is. We're playing Farnville. Yes, so, no, 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 the event is physically located in Lake Orion, the event information can be found online, on Facebook, on the Palion Trail.
Yeah, we're all too tired.
Yeah, I did not phrase that well.
Anything else? Mr. Mador, any updates?
Two twenty-one.
Sure.
Well, Hudson, that's the project, is able to start Monday? We've been working, and Nicole has sent all letters of communication to the residents in the area, trying to get it outlined, so we can keep abreast of the information and changes and close and things like that. There's like five entrances to that area, we're going to try to keep them open for all delivery trucks, we're trying to find out their delivery schedules, maybe, maybe there's a day where they don't do it, then we'll target those.
Will it intervene through traffic?
Yes.
This one.
Well, especially in the beginning, basically, because they're going to saw cut the road out, excavate it out, and put new water in the end, we're going to leave all the road in place until the end, when that's all done, and then we'll tear it all out, do the final paving towards the end. We're not sure what time will this take, we project wherever the park street will happen, but somewhere in that between the three contractors, availability and stuff. And then downside, we were not successful in one of the 15 grants from the Stockton office, it was over 90 applications, and they only put down 15, and we were not one.
Man, we had great news.
Thanks. Terry, any other?
No, I have everything.
Mr. Davis?
One brief, in traveling in circles for the approval of adult use facilities, I have received a fairly consistent compliments to our planning commission, the manner and the professionalism that they're working through these approvals, and some of the same players, you know, have facilities in other communities, and they get a lot of compliments on our planning commission.
Let's see, we have a very good planning commission.
Well, they called you out specifically.
I wish I'd been given.
That's great to hear. Okay, council comments. I just wanted to start with the June village council meeting, so if it conflicts with the school board meeting again, maybe we move it to the Wednesday instead of Tuesday, unless there happens to be a school board meeting on Wednesday as well. I'm not too familiar with the.
I haven't looked out.
Okay. Would everybody be available on the Wednesday instead of Tuesday? I could do to that. So that would be June.
So the second Wednesday of June?
Oh, actually, I wouldn't be there.
Well, the second one, the second one's in June, it's the eighth.
Because it's early.
Oh, I see.
So ours would be on the 14th, you can move one day to the 15th.
Right, I'm not available on the 15th. I could do the week before though.
I could do the eighth.
Eighth.
I have no life.
I'll wait for that.
I could do the eighth, this. I saw movement back there, is there an issue?
Oh, is that the, that's the township?
Oh, yes. What about the seventh?
The planning commission.
Why don't we, what about waiting to see what's on the agenda at the school board?
Yeah.
The agendas have been slowing down a little, tonight was a bear.
Yeah, Lori requested us to talk about it, unfortunately, she couldn't be here at the end of the meeting to give her input, but, maybe we could, I don't know, I want to try to make it as easy as possible. If we can find something that works for everybody, but, is there something going on at the 13th, it's a Monday.
Yeah, what about your old meeting day, the fourth Tuesday, or the last Tuesday?
Those like the only nights we, or months, I don't, that don't work. It can probably be.
It probably ain't fine.
Can they have anything year event for us to do? Year end for us to do?
Maybe some budget matters, maybe, just for, because they've really overdoing it in the.
Because that would be right before the end of the year.
Yeah. That's about it, though. I mean, what about, there's five Wednesdays in June, so.
Yeah, I'm going to, on the fifteenth and the twenty-second.
Okay.
Normally I'm here, but.
What about the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, that doesn't work for me. Don't miss our twenty-two, chief.
I did the twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
I know what it is, but it's okay.
Probably, most likely.
And we can check up Lori before we actually move it, just to be sure. But I just wanted to try to pick something that could work in case she needed it.
Does graduation, the second Tuesday in June? That's always been, okay. It used to be back in the day, the second Tuesday in June.
Next Thursday.
So maybe the twenty-ninth, if we need an alternate date?
Okay, I can send an email up, Lori.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. Any other council comments?
I didn't speak, I didn't do cable.
I was like, okay, you don't do it anymore?
I was thinking the same thing, I figured they threw this shit.
I'm just saying, it's been a long day. I totally forgot it was on the cable business.
I thought something happened.
I did not actually have a meeting, though, because no one else at work decided to show up. So I just stay at work.
Okay.
However, we are gonna be doing Terry's performance evaluation of the nice co-mates before the May meeting, well, this is bad, before the May meeting. Can get that, we're looking to do some advertising for the live streaming service that we have. For commencement, don't go out, grab, let's stay at home, watch TV, work on live streaming. And they're moving forward with their sign plan. They got a lot of things going right now, so. So, yeah.
She's back on the cable question.
Any other comments?
I just would like to, oh my gosh, words, sorry. Mrs. Prather's previous comment about National Gun Violence Awareness Day is first Saturday in June, that it goes June fourth, so it's just a wear orange day, just, I think that's appropriate for our community right now. Thank you.
We could possibly, do we have another meeting? I don't know, they have a tournament. I would like to say I'm just very upset that Mr. Tom Lincoln, who's one of our rental properties, passed away. Before I knew his funeral was, unfortunately, before any of us knew it. So he's gonna be missed, he's a good daddy.
Sad, I'm sorry to hear that. All right, eight forty.
So moved.